Okay, we'll call the Lundary School Board meeting to order. The meeting of the Lundary School Board will be held on Tuesday, March 21st, 2023, at 7:00 PM in Lundary High School, 295 Mammoth Road, Lundary, New Hampshire, in the cafeteria. The meeting will also be broadcast on local cable access, Channel 21, as well as the district's YouTube channel. If everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Paul Dutton will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this is the reorganization of the school board meeting. I sit here very temporarily, and I'm going to read a script from our lawyer to kind of explain the process to elect a new school board chair, and once that person is chosen, they'll take over the meeting. As per previous years and from the advice of our attorney, the following process will be utilized for the nomination and election of the chairperson. Open floor nomination for the chairperson. Accept the nomination and ask for a second. Then we'll call for a discussion, then we'll call for a vote. If the nomination fails to achieve the required majority, three, I'll open the floor again for a nomination and repeat the process. Our attorney has advised we should handle one nomination at a time. During the discussion phase, a board member is free to speak for or against the nomination and indicate if the nomination fails. They would nominate another specific individual. Once a chairperson is elected, the chairperson will take over the meeting and conduct the election for vice chairperson in the same manner. So I would like to open the floor for the nomination of a chairperson.
I would like to make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Can I say something first?
Sure.
Just wanted to kind of set the tone before I do so. So a year ago, I sat here in a very different place. The culture of our town was looking very different, and we all had very different ideas as to what direction was best. The first few meetings were difficult, to say the least, but I quickly discovered that I was part of a team, a team that all cared very deeply for our town and our students and our staff members. So I just really wanted to quickly say thank you to Amy for her service on the school board, and I wanted to welcome Tim Porter into our team. Tim, after the election last year, we almost immediately started running into each other at every possible location in town, and very quickly realized that you care what's best for our students, as do I, as I know everyone sitting here does. So I would like to make a motion to nominate Bob Slater for our school board chair.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion passes 5-0. Congratulations, Bob.
Thank you. Before I open the floor for a nomination for vice chair, I want to thank you and Kevin as well for what you've accomplished in one year on the board, as well as Sarah for the last two years of the time and commitment she's put, and welcomed him to the board, and also thank Amy for the three years of support she did for the school system. So with all that, let's have a great year, and I'll open the floor for a nomination for vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Sarah.
Sarah, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll move along here. We'll start with 3.2 appointments, true and opposite at each school.
Sorry, so, you know, every year at this reorganization meeting, basically our vice principals are named as the true and officers for their buildings, and there's a list in the board packet that kind of puts that in motion.
With that, I'd like to have, see if I could have a motion to approve the true and opposites as listed for each school.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
5-0.
The next phase of this is we need a secretary, and there's, Ms. Lisa Muse is sitting over there as our secretary, so we need a nomination for her as well.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Lisa Muse for secretary.
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. 5-0. And 3.3, re-adoption of policies.
Again, what's customary at our reorganization meeting is the school board literally just re adopts all the current policies that they have, and we do this every reorganization meeting.
I make a motion to re-adopt all of the current Lundary School Board policies.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
3.4, re-adoption of policy CI, temporary administration arrangements. So we have two policies, one being CI, and the temporary administrative arrangements basically kind of articulates the chain of command, you know, if the superintendent is not around, and how the chain of command works for the whole district as well, and each of the buildings. And the policy CI, it's the same as we did earlier in the year, but we do it at the reorganization meeting as well.
Sure.
I'll make a motion to approve policy CI, temporary administrative arrangements.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
3.5?
And the last one, again, this policy requires that we adopt it at our reorganization meeting. It is the policy on our investment policy. It's a long one, but it's one we do every year this time as well.
I'll make a motion to approve policy DFY, investment policy.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to consent agenda, we have one retirement to be read tonight.
Maureen Hutchins. Maureen Hutchins has been with the Lundary School District for 26 years. She started in 1997 as a special ed assistant. In 2000, she moved to the IT Department as a computer ed assistant. Maureen has done an excellent job with scheduling computer labs, IT support, and inventory management. She is also very skilled at developing training and presentation materials. Maureen has always been pleasant to work with, and she will be missed. We wish her well in the next chapter of her life.
Thank you very much. We'll go into meetings. Our next meeting is April 4th, 2023, regular meeting, LHS Cafe at 7:00, and April 18th of 2023, regular meeting in the library, right here at LHS, at 7:00 PM. We are going to discuss our calendar at 8.2, so I would look for an approval or any conflicts with this now before we take a vote on the consent agenda. Are you okay?
On the calendar?
Yeah, on the dates for the next two meetings, April 4th and April 18th.
I wasn't going to be presumptuous and assume I'd be sitting here. So the April 4th meeting, I will be traveling for work, and if at all possible, I mean, obviously, I'm not going to push it on anyone else to adapt to what I need, but I could make it Thursday on the 6th. Otherwise, I would just have to go to the next one.
Okay.
Want to get back to this?
Yeah, you want to come back?
Yeah, come back to it.
I can approve it.
Yeah, the 6th works.
It works, it works, okay? You okay?
I think we're fine.
Okay.
Are you okay?
Yep. So we'll change April 4th to April 6th. Still, we'll consider it here at the LHS Cafe unless something changes with the location. With that, I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second on that?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, committee report, student council. Are you ready there, Andrew? Here you go.
The student council began discussions on multiple topics. First, plans were made for this year's Kate Sherwood Walkathon, discussing the date it will be on, as well as food items that will be offered as concessions. The council also updated and ratified its constitution, lowering the requirements for membership in order to make the organization more accessible for those looking to join. Lastly, we finalized preparations for the Goffstown District meeting.
Thank you, Andrew. Okay. 5.2, school board liaisons. I'll start to my right. Amanda, anything?
Sure, yep. I have a couple updates from Moose Hill. So the Moose Hill staff would like to thank the PTA for their book donations from the Scholastic Book Fair and the teacher wish lists. The police car ride-along raffle tickets are on sale through April 11th. The annual Touch a Truck event will be held on Saturday, May 13th, at Moose Hill. The secretary and treasurer board positions are available for the next school year from the 2023-24 school year. And the next PTA meeting will be on Thursday, April 6th, at 6:00 PM. This is a new time from the 7:00 PM time from last, previous, and it's going to be available in person and virtual, and babysitting will be available.
Thank you.
Sarah?
Just a quick, LMS is meeting this evening at the PTO. There's a bunch of upcoming dates for the eighth grade end of the year, but Mr. Van Benicum is going to go over those as part of the, during the meeting, so I'll let him go over all that.
Thank you, Sarah.
From North School, they have started the kickoff for the fundraising glow run. There's underway, fundraising is underway, I should say, with the actual date being on April 14th. And then the North School Dodgeball night is coming up on March 30th. From South School, they have started their planning for the spring fling, so if you're interested in getting involved with that, with the planning or being involved with that, you can reach out there. And from the Senior Resource Committee, they are currently discussing the date for next year's expo, as well as they officially submitted their ARP, Community Challenge submission, which is a submission to the ARP to get funding for improvement in the community for seniors. In this case, the challenge request was for community garden supplies, specifically around raised beds for the seniors to be able to go out and work at the senior center on gardens. As another note, the senior center has added a whole number of additional programs and classes to their schedule, which are not just for senior center members. They are opening them up to all 55-plus residents in town. You can get to that on their Facebook page for a list of all the events.
Thank you, Kevin. Tim, you good?
Good.
You're good.
Thank you.
I've got a couple things. Last night at the council meeting was a lot of talk about community water in our community coming up. There's a utilities commission that's meeting, it may even be tonight, for their first meeting that's looking into this, and there's been a lot of discussion with federal funds and grants at the government level that may help us get through this, but stay tuned for that. Also, there's a possibility of looking at getting some pickleball courts in town. A community member brought that up last night, and I know there's, you know, with all our over 55 communities, it's becoming a very large sport in this, in the country, and that had some good facts last night. So stay tuned on that. And Matthew Thornton School, as you know, there's a pavilion going to be built this spring. The snow has pushed us back a little bit, but still hoping to break ground on that end of March, early April to get some use out of it this spring. In your packets, we have last year's liaison report, and we have a blank. I will try to get a PDF from DO that I could send to everybody, go through it, and we'll try to work it out behind the scenes on coverage as far as PTAs, PTOs, and then the general business, the As, Bs, and C group. So if, once I get it all back from you guys, what you want, I'll try to tabulate it and send it back out, and then you may want to reach out to a board member that's in that position if you really want it, and we'll just fine-tune it at the next meeting if that works with you guys.
If it works, great.
So we'll move on with that. We're going to move into six announcements and presentations next. Before we do that, I just want to hit on, before we get too far ahead, is we've got public comment after all the announcements and presentations, and what I'd like to do is for years, and I'm not sure where it got changed, but announcements and presentations slash public comment should be put together, so it's always 3.1, even before consent agenda. So I'd like to consider, and I know I can do it on my own, working with the superintendent, but I'd like a consensus of the board that we take care of those with any students coming in before we do our consent agenda like it was done for years. So it would come under like 3.0, and I think it should read announcements, presentations, public comment, and still allow our community to speak in that at the beginning of the meeting, so they can get ahead of anything being discussed in that. But we'll listen to all the children and teachers that have presentations for us and go right into public comment, if that's okay with everybody.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we're moving into announcements, presentations, and we're going to move 6.2 up first on the updated dress code policy with Crystal Rich and General Branch.
All right, so hopefully our little Lancer Man is going to pop up here in a second, which will kind of give you a visual of what the students, the staff from Lundary High School and Lundary Middle School have come up with for a new proposal for a dress code, which will be a cohesive dress code between the sixth grade all the way up to the high school. So as you know, we've been here quite a few times before.
The graphic is in the packet, if it won't pop up there.
Yep.
Okay, so as you know, we've been here a couple times before. Awesome. And we've kind of given you updates on the entire process that we've been through in reorganizing the dress code, and a lot of it was more just of reorganizing the language of it. It was very wordy. Across the board, we met with students from both the middle school and the high school, and they kind of gave us their feedback on everything. We reached out to the staff members, both at the middle school and the high school. They also gave us feedback. So anytime you're talking about a dress code, the reality is it's a really touchy subject. It's hard. Teachers don't want to address it. It's hard for students. They want to be able to express themselves the way they want to. It's really kind of a messy process, and, you know, when you're gathering feedback, you have a lot of strong opinions, especially from staff members, and it varies generationally. So we have some staff members who are, you know, very much against having hats in a classroom, and other staff members who are like, it's okay, it's, you know, part of who the kids are. And we have students who like to show how they express themselves in certain ways, and to some people, that's acceptable, and to some people, that's not acceptable. So unfortunately, when you're trying to write a dress code, it's very hard to come up with a consensus that works well for absolutely everybody. So please be aware, we did our very best to kind of cover all of the basis and get everyone's opinion and take it all into consideration. So we brought a couple wonderful students here with us. We have two from the high school and then two from the middle school, and they have a couple things that they just want to add in as we go over the specifics of this. So if you guys want to start with the middle school students?
I'm Michelle Khan, in eighth grade at LMS.
Hi, I'm Kai Spalding.
We were part of the process of figuring out the dress code. Ms. LaBranch and Mrs. Rich came to us and asked our opinions as to what we think it should be, and not just us, but the whole student council gave their opinion.
Yeah, like Michelle here said, we were part of the process of revising an early version of this new proposed dress code.
Hi, I'm Maggie Scofield, and I'm the vice president and the junior class of 2024.
I'm Natalie Washington, I'm the class of 24 historian.
So when Ms. Rich and Ms. LaBranch came to us to introduce their idea of making a new dress code, everyone was very much on board, because there's a lot of frustrations with the dress code. Like, there's a lot of measurements and stuff, and arms length, and some people's arms are longer than others, and it's kind of a hard topic to focus on. So we also saw a lot of distraction words, which, when they came to us, we all kind of thought that that was kind of directed towards women. So we kind of took everything out and revised it and updated it best we can.
So in order to make this new proposal, we met multiple times with all of the officers of each class, and everyone was able to give their opinion. It was very like laid back, all ideas were addressed, and we kind of just reworded the old dress code. We didn't think it was bad, it was just that things evolve, and we just need to reword some things.
Right, like every year, the trends change, you know, and if students are asked to express themselves in school, clothing is a big part of that, and if students can't wear what they want at school, then it's kind of just like, you don't feel welcome.
So it's always a hard line with the kids, because we're always like, whoa, you have to wear a uniform at work, don't you? And they're like, yeah, but that's different, and, you know, we get to be who we want to be here, and we certainly want to promote that culture with our kids. We want them to feel comfortable, we want them to come into the school feeling safe, and come into the middle school feeling safe, but also, we have to keep the lines of what's appropriate and what's not appropriate.
So we also wanted to kind of see it from a teacher perspective, too, to see, okay, so right now, there are, like Maggie said, there's a lot of like measurements. You know, your straps have to be a certain height, and your dress, your skirt has to be a certain length. And so we took a lot of that subjective language out of it, so it's very straightforward. You'll see the graphic that's up there, it's in your packet, are outlined, and then the current dress code is in your packet as well, with the red line kind of through it and the changes that we made. We definitely updated it with the trends. Like we said last time we were here, no leggings was in the current dress code. Lululemon wasn't a thing when that dress code was out. Leggings are, they're worn everywhere now. So it's kind of those, just kind of updating that normal stuff.
So some of the things that were really important to our kids and that are really important to our teachers are hats. And I think one of the things that we're seeing nowadays is that a lot of the kids have AirPods, and when they're wearing hoods in school, or they're wearing certain types of hats that can cover their ears, and obviously, this is difficult, too, with girls who have longer hair, but it can create that amount of distractibility for the students learning in their academic setting. And so when we're talking with the kids, we were talking about, well, how can we meet halfway? You know, so we'll allow them to wear hats, however, they can't be covering their ears. Or they can be wearing hoods in the hallways, but not necessarily in an academic setting. So we really tried to kind of separate what could happen in a hallway versus what could happen, well, in the classroom, trying to get or retain information from their teachers. The other thing that's hard, especially nowadays, are crop top shirts. We all know if we're trying to shop for teenagers nowadays, and even adults, it's hard. And so, you know, we kind of came under the general consensus that you really need to be covered from your armpit down to your mid-thigh, and your mid-thigh is different for every person. And prior to this, it was stick your arms down. Well, when Jen sticks her arms down, it's a very different measurement for her than it is for me, and so how do you find that equality for all of the kids? And even still, it will be hard. It won't, this is not, you know, a very cut-and-dry, easy subject, so there's still going to be a little bit of gray area. And then there were other things, you know, kids like to wear pajamas nowadays to school. Okay, so they want to wear pajamas. Are they covered from where they need to be covered? Yes, so then what's the big deal if they want to wear pajamas, as long as they're appropriate? You know, so those were a lot of the discussions that we had, and I felt like the kids did a really good job representing not only their feelings, but being able to express their opinions in an appropriate way, and also understanding where we were coming from, both as admin and staff, which I felt was important. And it was a good lesson for them to kind of learn and go through with this whole process with us. So there's, again, two sheets in there. There's the visual, which we wanted the kids to have, because every time we asked the kids if they read the handbook, they were like, yeah, no, I just signed it. So we kind of felt like getting the word out, and we had learned this from a couple other area schools that were doing something similar, which we felt was an awesome idea. So this, if approved, will be the dress code going forward for next year. So we won't, we won't, it will be hard, you know, put it into place for the end of this year. But I think at a fresh start, new school year will be really good for the kids. And that's what we have.
I just wanted to say thank you for being a part of the, of figuring out the dress code. I think it's important for students to be involved in that, so thank you for your time. I just have a question, a question about, you said hoods are not permitted in academic settings, but they are allowed in the hallways?
Yep.
Was this, how did the committee feel about this? I just have a few concerns about just hoods not being able to identify someone in the hallway or if something was going on, or identify an intruder or something like that, if they were covering themselves with a hood. I don't know if that was discussed or really talked about in regards to anything like that. Just, and I think it's also harder for teachers to enforce the hood rule. If you're walking down the hallway, you have your hood on, kids are going to come into class whether still with their hood on, the teacher's going to be saying 50 times, take- take your hood off, take your hood off, take your hood off. Just don't know if that's going to make it more difficult to enforce. Okay, take it off now. Now you can put it on. I don't know if that was discussed much, because I know I see that all the time.
Yeah, so it absolutely was discussed. I think there was definitely a headwear discussion, and then there was a hats and hoods discussion. They're two very different things. There was that discussion, currently, that's what we're doing now. Please take your hood off, please take your hood off, please take your hood off. The, kind of that meet in the middle part was, most of my kids that I deal with during the day, I think the kids that Crystal deal with, you ask them to take their hood off, they do. They don't always like it because they're hiding, they're usually hiding their AirPods, or they just, you know, bad haircut day, or bad hair day, or whatever. But if they have the opportunity in some point to put it on, they, from the kids that we've talked to, they're more likely to take it off when we ask them to, because they have an opportunity to kind of express themselves if they want to put their hood on in a different setting.
And I think a lot of this, we saw a drastic change in hood usage returning from COVID. We really did. It's, you know, kids felt like they could hide in there, and, you know, for some of them, in a whatever way, it made them feel more comfortable. And so we tried to evaluate that as well, moving forward as we're trying to continue to move our schools in, you know, a good, safe direction for all of our kids. So that was kind of where that came from. I completely agree with your point. It creates a lot of tough area for, you know, staff members in regards to, you know, having that discussion, that argument, but I think a lot of it also comes down to our strong staff and our ability to manage our classrooms. And, you know, I think we had, we need to have those discussions with our kids of, yes, we're going to come so far to kind of give you what you need, but then also, you have to respect the boundaries of our school and our classroom rules. And I think we have different rules in different settings for different kids, and, you know, different teachers have different roles in their classrooms too. And I agree with your statement, but I also think kids have to adjust to different circumstances in different.
And how about the safety hazard aspect of this in the hallways and stuff, or even trying to identify a student with a camera? Or have you talked to the SRO or other admin at the high school to kind of look at things like that?
Yeah, so I would say nineteen and a half times out of twenty, we know who a kid is like that. We, I have, as an admin here, I feel as though the four of us, or five of us, we know our children very well, inside and out, all four of us in the house offices. If one of us doesn't know who a student is, the next one knows who it is, and we do this all day long, identifying kids. So yes, I can definitely see and agree with your point of a safety, you know, standpoint too, and if it's something that we want to discuss further, we can definitely do that. We did give this to all the admin prior to this, and the concern was not brought up about that.
Thank you. That's all I have questions.
Any questions?
Yeah, I just had one question about, you said that this was proposed to start at the beginning of the next school year, and I just wondered if you had discussed spring coming and how that would impact the dress code, if you feel like things weren't really being enforced anyway, or if approving it now or sooner would benefit staff and students?
So I think we had that discussion the last time we were here, and we were kind of looking at timeline. You guys have to read through it three times. So really, time-wise, by the time you guys read through it three times, if any changes need to be made, we're really, might be in May anyway.
Okay.
So I don't necessarily know that that's a conversation that we, we're going to get into spring, and we're going to deal with the same things we deal with every spring. My classroom is on the second floor at the middle school, and it's about ninety degrees all the time. But I totally get it. I just think with the time of what you guys have to do policy-wise, I don't necessarily know that we're going to be able to get it in. I think it would be really hard to make that change in the end of May or June.
Okay, that makes sense.
Good. Kevin?
First of all, I really love the simplification of it. Clears up a lot of those gray areas that were littered throughout the original code. I did have similar questions there around identification of students, but it sounds like that's something you guys have already discussed with the admin team.
A student should have their ID on them at all times as well. So, you know, if there is an issue, a staff member should be able to say to a student, let me see your ID right now, and that's also in the code. That could help as well.
Okay. I think as long as the administrative team is comfortable with it, then I'm okay with it.
Tim?
I'm good, thank you.
And everybody kind of hit areas I had concerns, but I want to thank you all for all the time and effort you put in, and Crystal. And you guys have done a heck of a job. I know we started last fall, and we're at this point now, so thank you for all this information, and hopefully we'll move it forward from here. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Bring up William and Dave and Megan Nason with the Program of Studies.
I think Dave's going to bring up a couple of slides, and he'll get to that in just a minute, but I'll go ahead and just introduce what we're here for this evening. And first of all, say good evening, and ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the school board. I'm glad to see you. With me tonight is Dave Sutherland. He's our assistant principal. He's also in charge of scheduling students. Process will begin sometime in March, early March, maybe even February, and really will extend all the way through into the summertime. So he's here this evening with us. Megan Nason, you're familiar with, she's our curriculum coordinator, she's here with me as well. And we're here this evening to share with you the 2023-2024 Program of Studies. Traditionally, the middle school just simply kind of goes through a few grammatical changes and updates and so forth, but actually, this evening, we do have some program changes. We also have taken some very proactive steps in providing what I think is some new student opportunities for next year that we're excited to share with you tonight, and Mr. Sutherland will do that in just a moment. But in addition, Mrs. Nason is here, and she will begin tonight first detailing some of the revisions that we have to some of our current academic programs, and also highlight some of the innovative changes to our computer science classes at the middle school. So I'll turn it over to Mrs. Nason. Go ahead, Megan.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to present the 2023-2024 Program of Studies for Lunenary Middle School. LMS strives to provide a rigorous academic program for all students with a focus on growing student choice, all while encompassing the academic needs of our students, and a continued focus on the district-wide competencies. We focus on our community through the teaming model, and each student has many opportunities to be part of our community throughout their day and beyond. From athletics to after-school clubs, storm time, and more, students are able to feel connected to our building and staff. Middle school is about growing in many aspects. Not only do our students leave us significantly taller than when they arrive, but they also grow academically in many areas. A few ways LMS remains the same is in our teaming model. Each student is placed on a team, which includes science, social studies, English, reading, math, and related arts programming. The team model helps students to feel the camaraderie of their team, creating meaningful relationships with their peers, all while learning together. Students are exposed to a wide variety of teaching methods that address the diverse learning styles, social-emotional learning, and cooperative approaches that our students need. We are still offering advanced courses for students in the area of mathematics, and continue to work with Lunenary High School on courses such as French, Spanish, Algebra I, and Honors Algebra I for credit. Our staff continues to work in both their professional learning communities and departments to align the curriculum and experience for our students, keep up with the standards, and engage our students in learning. The first change that I want to discuss is in our reporting student grades. This change is really just in the last sentence of the reporting of student grades. We still have our letter grade system. The update was done in the last sentence to reflect a reporting process for district competencies. To more accurately and thoroughly report a student's progress in the district competencies, we shifted from a one-to-four model to a descriptive comment for parents. This allowed parents to understand and have language behind just, not just a number, and not have to go back to a rubric to look at what that number meant. We also now include the communication and collaboration competencies, as we before only reported in self-direction. This change was to align with the district competency work. New this year, we are excited to be granted the one-to-one opportunity devices for next year, and we are working on ways in which these devices will support our students, provide new opportunities for learning, and close the gap on barriers we were facing. With that said, a new aspect of our program will be in the area of computer science, pages sixteen and seventeen. With the addition of a new digital learning specialist last year, we were able to incorporate the teaching of applications and skills into the curriculum when students and teachers needed it. Therefore, our focus could shift to include engaging students in coding, robotics, and creative media. The new computer science curriculum changes are as follows. The sixth grade course was previously part of our seventh grade curriculum. This shift in curriculum was made intentionally to engage our students in what makes a computer a computer, but also to learn to code and spark interest in their future endeavors. The seventh grade computer science course has a focus on web-based robotics using the coder Z program. Also, the students will learn about computer hardware, software, and cybersecurity, all things that they want to learn about. This course will go back to a twelve-week course, we had it as a six-week course this year, related arts, twelve-week related arts course with a culminating project on cyber robotics, taking some of that coding learned in sixth grade and applying it. And I will turn it over to Dave Sutherland, who will discuss our final change found on page twenty in the non-performance or music alternative options.
So these new course offerings that you see from this point down under the music alternative options is something we're very excited to offer our students. It was born out of a lot of work that was done through our, through a task force that I was working with, looking at scheduling, and it was a broad-based task force with teachers from across all grades, teams, and departments. And one of the tenants of what they wanted a schedule to do was to offer student voice and choice. When we combine that with what we see is a little bit of a shift in the music, of students choosing the music at the middle school, we thought this was a great time to do this. And members of the task force came up with this plan where we are able to maintain the level of music course offerings and integrity of the incredible music program that we have, while giving those students who really aren't interested in a performance option such as singing or playing an instrument, some other options that were not tied to music. So in this task force, they came up with the list of options that you see, and what we had to do to make them work is we put them into what we call course packages. And the course packages are in groups of three, so they run by trimester up there. So what you see is you actually see up there an eighth-grade music course selection sheet that was sent home to our seventh graders. And you can see we still offer band, orchestra, chorus, and even our exploring music options, which we've had for many years. And then you see the course packages. And the teachers were instrumental in deciding what these packages were, once we were able to determine where it was going to fit and what teachers we were going to use and which teachers offered. They actually came up and said, I think this is going to be great. So we look at Mr. Noon, runs our ropes course, he wanted to offer an adventure lore-type class. We said, great, we can fit that. And then we've got also in here is exposure to world languages, both for seventh grade and also in eighth grade. So students who may be in a world language in eighth grade can still take this Exploring World Language course, I'm sorry, the Exploring Spanish Culture course, or students who are not in a world language. So it's open to everyone as well. So we're not limiting students by doing this. When we did this, it was also a very large discussion with Serge and the music department. So we met with them repeatedly to find out how we can make sure that when we offer these options, that we communicate in a way to the students that we still value the music program that we have and want them to stay in here and not go to these other course packages if they were very much interested. And we did hypothesize that we wouldn't see a lot of kids dropping music for this. And so far, with the course selection sheets that have come in, and they're still coming in, that hypothesis has proven to be accurate. We've seen very little to no drop from students wanting to get out of band or chorus in seventh or eighth grade, only in the single digits, which we knew was going to happen, because they didn't want an exploring music. So they said, oh, we'll take chorus, but now that we've got some other option here, they did that. But we're talking in the single digits at this point, ones, twos, and threes, from all the course selection cards that have come in. So that means our kids who really want music are still doing it, and now we've got a chance for students to choose other options if they're not interested in performing music. Is that it?
That's it.
If you have any questions, we'll be glad to answer any questions for you. The only thing I just want to emphasize too, so in grade six, so these choices are only available for grade seven and eight. We want all grade six kids as they come in, either to be in any performing music and/or explore toy music. So that full year music course is still available to our incoming sixth graders, which then allows them to get that experience then, and then go on to grade seven and eight and decide whether or not they want to continue to stay in exploring music, or whether or not they would like to take those three options. And as it's time, I'd say going into the 2023-24 year, those are the three options we have. They may shift over time as interests may change, as we would like to be reflective of that. But overall, we'd like to start off with this, and I think what we will find is, as Dave has indicated, we do have some kids who I think really would find a benefit from these three options, who really don't find an interest in music, and unfortunately, oftentimes feels a force for them. And I think this has been a pattern and been there for quite some time. So, you know, hats off to Dave and the task force. It did take over a year to look at our schedule, and really kind of come up with these options for students, and to our teachers too, for their willingness to step outside the normal boundaries and say, hey, listen, we could really offer this within our normal class schedule and still be able to support these different options. So that's where we are. So I don't know if you have any questions, or we can answer any questions at this time.
Stop this right.
What falls under the super study skills?
So the super study skills, we wanted to make sure it was very clear that that is not a homework time. It really is designed to help students take their content areas, get help in their content areas, and embed and learn specific study skill strategies that they're going to need in high school. And I know you may be aware of this, but each of those change each trimester, so no one's, the students don't remain in those, they'll actually have three different, unique experiences, which will be.
Just to piggyback off that, who's teaching those classes?
So I've got teachers from several different departments teaching them. I've got reading teachers, I've got English teachers, I've got a PE teacher, and I've got the music department.
Is there a certain curriculum that they're following for these, those classes?
No, we're working with Megan to develop those learning outcomes, and they're going to have some curriculum money over the summer to do that.
Okay, so there'll be something in place prior to the year beginning?
Yes.
That they're following some type of curriculum for the classes?
Yes, they're, yeah, same, you'll get the same syllabus that they would get for anything.
Yes, we already have an Exploring World Language class curriculum that's already been built, so that is already there. Genius Hour was run years prior to COVID, and that had stopped, so that one, we're just bringing back. That's a really unique opportunity for kids to take something they want to learn and really enhance that, so that curriculum is already there. And then a few of the other ones, we'll work over the summer.
Just making sure that curriculum, the certifications, it all match up with what they are teaching, to make sure we're following, yeah. But I do like the variety, and I think little kids are often, you know, getting nagged about taking music year after year when they have no, you know, interest in it. So I do appreciate the variety of different classes and different options for them.
Yeah, just to add to that, I really appreciate the work you did with this. Just like all kids aren't athletically inclined, not all kids have interest in music, and for some, for some, it can be, feel like pulling teeth. And I think when kids have motivation to, and interest in a topic, they do better, and they are more attentive, so I just really appreciate the opportunity for the kids who don't necessarily fall into that musical category.
And that's what we hope to see, is because they're able to choose this, something that's more applicable to their interests, we're going to see behaviors that are more in tune with that, and engagement in that. That's the Genius Hour Megan was talking about, you know, that is a self-directed research, it's a project-based class. And the kids that take it, I hope, understand what they're getting into, and they're going to be motivated because they can design anything they want.
Exactly.
Right? Which is awesome.
I like seeing the computer science focus here. I'm just curious, though, I noticed it's a sixth and a seventh grade class that have been listed. Is there an eighth grade option to continue on, it's just not new?
That is not new. Yes, we have the Intro to Creative Media course that is there, yes. So there is an option in eighth grade as well, and they usually take that class or our woodworking class, but there is no change to that class, that class still exists.
But there is no change to that class, that class still exists.
Good. Everyone good? So Dan, I imagine you're looking for a decision?
Yeah, you know, so we have it under the deliberations part of the meeting. You can, you can deliberate now, you can deliberate later. It might be good to deliberate now because the people are going to answer your question that are right there.
Yeah, play it while we're here, so we can move that up. With that said, I'll look for a motion to approve the eighth grade LMS program of studies.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five-zero. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, on to six point three, school board discussion of consultant contract. And I'll, I'll open it up to anyone that wants to start, or I can start if you'd like. You okay? I thought we should put this on here a few weeks back, as we only had a non-public in the month of February, along with the deliberative. Tried several times to be able to talk about this as we found on information early February regarding the consultant contract. As you know, I was the one that made the motion to utilize the contract, the consultant to help Lisa and Dan move forward with our school district. When we discussed this, you know, I said time of five to 10 hours should be comfortable per month, knowing that there might be more time, it might be less time per month. And this was on about September twentieth that we discussed this, and the motion was made and approved by the board at that time, five-zero. There were stipulations put in place, you know, for billing purposes, line item, you know, time of call, what the subject matter was, and, and then the total sum for that. At that point, I don't believe any of us were in the understanding that we were using that service at that point because we had just voted in September twentieth. You know, some, some public comment got out there with the information that became public in February, you know, where one bill was four thousand eight hundred dollars for the month of October and three thousand seven hundred somewheres in November. I just want to go back a little bit, as we, as a board, approve the manifest every month and overview payments made to contractors, suppliers, reimbursement, all sorts that the districts make payment on. The number one objective to hire this consultant was to help our business agent that had taken on a task and our superintendent that was new to his position. And not, a lot of people know that our business agent, Ms. McKinney, had no assistant up until the end of November, early December. So she was handling basically the business agent and handling several departments with all new personnel in these positions. And a lot of the information never gets out because it's personnel details up at district office. So when I seen the bill in October for four thousand odd dollars, I said, well, we got the budget starting, we just hired him in September, late September, and yeah, it's higher than I expected, but with the budget and a five million dollar bond being worked on and documents being put together, which is a tremendous amount for a bond, and then the, the budget alone, and her not having her an assistant, and Dan trying to handle the buildings and bring us forward like we have been, month to month, in, in a good way. So that's the reason I had taken it, and that's the reason I didn't question the bills of four thousand odd dollars and three thousand odd dollars, because I knew she was doing this virtually on her own. And then thank God, we found a wonderful woman that, you know, we were able to hire in late October that started from another school district as the financial assistant in late November, and now things are moving. So I just wanted the community to know that we voted on the twentieth, assuming it started then. And there was criteria to that, that I'm not happy was not followed. And the reason the billing was where it was is we had Lisa handling five, six department heads with three or four of them brand-new, some only one year in position, and thought that there was some, some time used over and above what we thought would need to be used in those couple of months' time. So there was no, no reason to question it. I trust these people and that. And this, this dropped it, you know, gave me some questions on this after the, this information was brought forward. We have had discussions in non-public as it is, you know, employees, so that was discussed in non-public. And I just wanted to bring this forward for the public so they understood where we are and let any board member discuss how they saw it or what they may want to do moving forward. So I'll end there and let any other board member jump in. Kevin?
Yeah, so I definitely was not aware that there was any backdated billing going on there. Was not happy, to say the least, when I found out about it. And honestly, taking into account the backdated billing and the billing records with the minimal details, to your point of the contract was explicit, the line items and to be details to what was being called about. I'm personally not satisfied with the spirit of the contract that's been followed. And since we are through budget season, I personally think it's probably best for all parties if we end this consulting contract now. So I personally, I'd like to make a motion that we end the contract effective immediately with the consultant.
Second?
Can we just have some discussion?
Yep, discussion.
Just want to ask Lisa, how, do you feel that that's needed anymore? Ours, just some conversation from you?
At this point in time, I have a finance director in place, and I think that we are moving forward and we'll be fine.
Okay.
Any other further discussion? No. We have a second. A call for a vote in favor of terminating the contract with the consultant. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Pass is five-zero. Thank you. Okay, moving on to six point four, eighth grade promotion ceremony.
Good evening again, and I just wanted to allude to just before I get started, the promotion ceremony, that we did have, as we're rolling out the program of studies, I know I have parents in here from the middle school as well, and there may be some watching. If they have questions, don't hesitate to contact us, okay? Because some of those things may look new, they have some questions about the super study skills, for instance, you know, trying to get the kids enthusiastic, just give us a call, we'll be happy to go through that with them, so, okay? All right, good news, right? So at the beginning of, or the end of last year, we all decided that we would like to go ahead and kind of reignite our eighth grade, what we call promotional ceremony. So we are in place to do that, so I have the details to share with you that this evening, okay? So people can get that on their calendar, that's really important. This year, we'll be recognizing our eighth graders as they move from LMS to the high school. We'll be doing that on Wednesday, June fourteenth. We are going to be doing this at the high school gymnasium. We want to thank Katie Sullivan for coming over because we have all kinds of plans and all kinds of ideas, and she was very helpful in guiding us to a location and so forth. There is no worries at the high school because the high school apparently it'll be out, seniors will have graduated. I believe exams finish at eleven-thirty, so really, we kind of have the gym wide open, so it worked out well for us, and we want to thank the high school for that. We're going to be doing that from twelve to one-thirty on that day. And then following the ceremony itself, we'll have a chance to take pictures, kids can have pictures with their families and grandparents and all those that are in attendance. The ceremony in general will be casual, in attire, by attire. We're actually ordering T-shirts. The T-shirts will have, it will be a high school T-shirt, so they'll be able to wear it beyond middle school. And on the back, we'll have class of two thousand twenty-seven and a list of all of the kids' names on there, so we'll be able to take it. So we'll have all the kids, it looks like we'll be wearing the same thing that day. We're going to walk over from the middle school. They're going to be seated by teams, but in alphabetical order. And what I thought was really exciting is that they will be called and greeted by the principal, excuse me, they'll be called, I'll greet them, shake their hands, and then they'll take what's called a ceremonial walk across to the officially become a student of Londonary High School, and they'll be greeted by their house administrator next year. Because as you know, they're split up by alphabetical order. So each one of the APs at the high school have, are willing to be there with us. So the kids will walk across, for the first time, they'll be all together as a house, and then they'll sit, sit back down until we go through all of the kids in alphabetical order. The teachers from each team will announce their students' names. In addition, we're also working with the high school to get a guest speaker. We'd like one of, one of the high school, either incoming seniors, possibly the class president and/or the student council president, kind of welcome the new students there. So we're working with the high school and Katie Sullivan on that. And then the students, each, there's, I believe, students from each team, they'll give a short speech, a little bit about their, their reflection on their time at LMS. There'll be a music selection by one of the students or students, and then of course we'll play music as they enter and exit the gym and afterwards. And this will be, and kids will actually be dismissed home after the ceremony, and this will be the last day for eighth graders, so they'll finish on this day. So I think it's going to look, work really, really well. We've got some kind of little surprises hidden, so I don't want to give everything away yet for the kids, but essentially, they have a really good end-of-year week that we've been kind of building and organizing for them. So they'll still do traditional things of going to Canopy, we still have a, a, end-of-year dance for them, which is an opportunity, they like to dress up. We kept this casual, just in case some of our kids really want to dress up and so forth, but it's very difficult because it's in the afternoon, you got to walk almost, you know, half a mile up to the high school, it's going to be tough in heels and dresses. So we're going to keep it nice and casual, and everybody looking the same, and they get to take something with them as they go. So we're really excited for that, and that's on Wednesday, the fourteenth, okay? Any questions about the promotional ceremony or anything?
Is there going to be a limit to how many guests?
I don't, you know what, I don't know what the gym capacity is, I'm assuming it's six hundred maybe? Jason, do you know?
Closer to two thousand.
Two thousand, all right, we got a little bit of room in there then. I think we'll be all set. Yeah. We've got a class of about two sixty-seventies, kid brings about four parents, I think we'll be good, four people.
Thanks. Thank you for putting this together, William. This is.
You're welcome. Yeah, so I would do it by myself, there's a committee of eighth-grade teachers and myself, so, but we're excited about that, and we'll have a program and so forth for them, so. So the next announcement, I'll just keep going if that's okay?
Yep.
We're really excited to announce that Chaos and Kindness will be coming to LMS this year. This is part of our social, emotional, and learning initiative that we started. We will host Justin and Ryan from Chaos and Kindness, those of you who know who they are, they are on TV, as you know. They are also, they're kind of locally based out of the Lakes region and so forth, so having been up from that area, I'm kind of familiar with them. The event will be in April, I'm just kind of alluding to the date, they've asked me to kind of hold off on that, we do have a date, we sent it out to parents and so forth. In addition to the students at the middle school, what we're really excited about is we're asking, actually having our rising sixth graders there. So that will be all of the fifth graders from all three elementary schools will also be joining us. There are two performances, one would be the fifth and sixth grade together, and then we'll be the seventh and eighth grade together. So this will be a nice opportunity for the fifth graders to be together as the first time, as the incoming sixth grade class, and also be part of the middle school experience for an assembly program. So we're excited about that. I believe all the elementary schools have been notified, or those parents are aware, so we've been working together with that. We'll bring them over and so forth, and then get them all situated. Each performance is about an hour long, and it provides a tremendous amount of excitement. If you're not familiar with the guys, they are very good with this age group. This is right up their alley, and our kids will have a great time with them. I do want to thank our elementary school principals, Amity Small, Deb Sutherland, and also Dave, Paul Dutton, for their support, and also to each of their PTAs. Each of them have made a gracious donation to take part in the cost of them coming to visit us, so we're also, want to say thank you to that. In addition, I also want to recognize our LMS PTL, who will be actually contributing Chaos and Kindness T-shirts. So we'll be buying a set of T-shirts, we'll be raffling those off up the week before the guys get here. We'll be doing that with some of our fifth-grade kids as well, on behalf of them, so we want to thank you for that. And then, once again, we are excited to welcome them to LMS in conjunction with our SEL committee this year, and part of our Better Together Days at LMS, we continue to build what I consider to be a social, emotional wellness among our student body. So this is a nice culminating event to kind of bring out the year to a close, so we're excited to have them.
Excellent.
Okay? I don't know if there's any questions at all, or?
Questions?
We will be happy to send out invites to all of you, so we will expect you to be, you know, part of it with the kids.
Thank you very much.
So we'll make sure to do that, okay?
Appreciate it.
You're welcome, thank you.
All right, go into deliberations, eight point two, eight point one, we took care of, to see what action the board will take regarding proposed school board meeting schedule, April twenty-three through August. Sorry about that. Almost skipped over what I wanted to change in the beginning, so. Let me take a moment here, we're going to go right to public comment. We'll try to keep, keep it between three and five minutes if possible, and try to keep it to a thirty-minute max if possible. If it's something important, we'll continue, of course, if it's something somebody from the community needs to keep discussing here with us. So anyone that has public comment, you're welcome up.
Hello, good evening, Maria Barud, Bridle Path. First of all, I would like to congratulate Tom, Tim, and Bob of your election here. I just, and I would like to thank you for carrying out of that position of the consultant. I understand the position was needed, I'm glad Lisa has help right now. I would just like to know what's the amount of up-to-date, how much we paid for that? Because I know these were just two months of bills, and I'm really glad you guys caught it and that it was reduced, but can we please avoid this kind of additional spending in the future? Because this money could be spent much better. I'm always worried about our teachers and assistants who get paid very little for their excellent job, and yet we pay almost ninety dollars an hour to a person for some random consultations, which were listed as a weather consultation on the invoice. So do we know the final?
If you want to send the school board an email, I'll make sure you get it within twenty-four hours. Let me get you an exact amount, I don't have that with me.
Are we in a range of ten thousand dollars?
I think we're around twelve thousand dollars, somewhere in that range.
No.
For Ball Park.
That's a lot.
Okay.
That's a lot. Well, thank you.
You bet.
Could I respond to that, too?
Sure.
The issue is not that, we want Lisa and all of our staff to have the support they need to be successful, and when people are in a new role, mentoring is not uncommon. Behavior skills training is evidence-based that people need a model to do what they need to do. The issue was, I think, the communication surrounding it. So we want our staff to know that we'll continue to support their needs, and if they need a consultant to be successful, if we need a new role to be successful, we of course want to be financially mindful, that we don't want to spend too much money, but we could also spend additional money from not having the supports we need in place to make sure people can do their jobs. So I think there's a, there needs to be a healthy balance there.
Yes, I definitely agree that staff need support, but when we look at the invoices and we see a bill for six hours advising about weather, ninety dollars an hour, that's a little bit excessive.
Yeah, I think to your point, too, I think that invoice could have been a little bit more detailed. I don't think that they probably spent six, oh, I don't think we spent six hours talking about weather on the phone call, I think it was probably surrounding busing and student safety and Department of Public Works and things like that, so.
So the invoice wasn't correct?
So I think going forward, we'll make sure that our invoices are more clear and that we do our homework there, and I think that that, we owe people transparency surrounding that, but we're going to continue to make sure that our staff are supported.
Well, transparency is definitely, definitely important, but when invoice states weather, that's, it's very vague.
So we knew more detail, you'd agree with that, right?
Yes, yeah, definitely more detail, and spend that money a little better. Thank you.
Thank you.
We had a, you all had a very favorable. We had a, you all had a very favorable vote the other day in the middle of a blinding What we heard at town council last night was that the voting numbers weren't really much different than they normally would have been on, considering there was no real big item going on or any big controversy going on at the time. So congratulations on that. Tim, congratulations to you. You've worked hard over the past three years. People don't know that, and they don't see that, but, so it needs to be said how hard you worked to get to this position. So I'd like to congratulate the board on the hard work that you did to get that favorable vote, and those favorable votes. You heard from people in the audience that you would never get a bond. You heard that you would never get your budget. And instead of, instead of cowering under the table, you took that information and you said, you know what? That means we have to work harder, and that's what you did. After hours, on social media, making phone calls to people, helping them understand what was going on. In addition to that, you had Amity Small, who has a full-time job as a school principal and took on the job of communications, spending countless hours getting the word out to people, helping them understand what was going on. In addition to that, you all have a new boss. Or he works for you, I still haven't figured that part out. But at any rate, Dan Black, who has brought a new enthusiasm and dedication to the position, which spurred everybody along to work harder and smarter and do advertising and communicate with people. So I want to congratulate you all. That vote didn't happen by accident. That vote happened because of hard work. And guess what? The hard work doesn't stop. You have to keep doing that, because the communication between you all and the community has been fractured for quite some time now. So please, keep up the good work, keep communicating, let people know what's going on, and I think you're going to find that this community will support public education. It always has, and I think it will continue. In my 44 years in town, which to some people is not a lot, because they've been here longer, but to me, 44 years is a long time. I've seen ups, downs, sidewayses, and yet the community has always, always support, supported public education. So please, keep up the good work. My soapbox item tonight is about your role as board members and as a central office staff. Let's be clear, the special ed kids, I'm going to step on a landmine here, the special ed kids have federal and state support. The general education kids have you and you. And those are the only thing that those kids have, to support them and to make sure they get what they need for a proper education. So please, keep that in the back of your head. It's hard to believe, but it's going to be budgets before you know it, again. And, and keep in mind that it takes money that the state is not giving you to support the gen ed kids and all the unfunded federal mandates that you have to follow. And I hope that you all will continue to support the gen ed kids and the special ed kids at the same time, so that they're all getting a quality public education. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you very much. We'll move into deliberations, 8.2. Don't need to, don't need to. To see what action the board will take regarding the proposed school board meeting schedule, April 2023 through August 2023. Everybody should have it in their packet, and any discussion on this date with anyone here, or Dan, with you?
No, I mean, yeah, so what you have in your board packet is it's typical to have two meetings a month. We set that up for April, May, and June. June's a little different, for everyone who's been on the board before. High school graduation week is a very busy week for you all. You know, there's lots of things going on, so we try to avoid that week. That's why it became a little bit different. We put one meeting in July and one meeting in August, and obviously, the, the, the school tours happen, the Wednesday and Thursday, when staff come back, which is not on the calendar yet. I think it's the 23rd and 24th. But just, just like you guys can decide how you want to use your times, we thought these would be good in terms of getting two meetings in for the rest of the school year, having one over the summer months per month, but it's entirely up to you, how you guys want to use your time.
Good aim.
I think, I think the meeting schedule looks good. The only thing I would ask the board is if we come down a couple months away and find that we need another meeting in July or August, that we just leave that opportunity open to call for a meeting and see what we might have available?
Of course.
Because who knows in a couple months what might come up?
Yep.
And another meeting in July or August might be needed.
And I think to that point, Sarah, we had two meetings all last summer, Dan, because of all the new staff and that, so I think we're in a good place now, and you're comfortable in that. And to Sarah's point, we could just throw, get one in there if we had to.
Yeah, for sure. You know, it really depends on, you know, this is connected to, you know, the last item, what are the items we want to work on this spring?
Yep.
And that'll set up the summer. So if we need more time, we can definitely make it.
Okay.
I'd just like to add that if we could stick to the rhythm of the alternating weeks for the most part, that's really helpful for work schedules.
Sure.
And of course, if we need to make a plan, like a last-minute change, like we did tonight, to accommodate people and be flexible, that's fine, but if we could stick to the bi-weekly schedule we're on, that would be helpful for, personally, for my work schedule and just balance and things in that.
Yep. Guys, good?
Yes.
I'll look for a motion to approve the Londonary School Board proposed board meeting calendar.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. And we've got the calendar, our favorite subject here. Have to laugh about that, Dan.
Yes, we all do. So this is a highly vetted calendar, learning from a few months ago. Not a lot of major changes. I'm just going to walk through two and then kind of see what questions you all have. It's ready to approve tonight. You don't have to, and we can take more time, but just putting it out there, I think, helps the public plan, vacations and things like that. You know, the major difference is, in the last couple of years, we've had a workshop day in October. We've switched that to February. Where it is in February is where the primary may be. As you all know, where the primary ends up, we have no idea. But wherever the primary is, we'll have a teacher workshop day, because Fieldhouse gets very busy that day. It's impossible for us to kind of have kids with all that going on. So however that plays out, we'll adjust. So right now, it's February 6th. If it becomes earlier or later, or whatever goes on in the national, whatever it is, we will adjust. So that, that's the one main difference. You know, and then internally, we've had a lot of conversations about November. We know that no school November is a tough thing. It's just kind of the way the calendar works out between Thanksgiving, Veterans Day, and elections. So there is no election next year. Two years out, obviously, we have a presidential election. But I think, you know, what we're kind of previewing is, we're trying to move the teacher workshops back a little bit. They're a good time, sorry, the parent-teacher conferences back a little bit. They're a great time for parents to get to know all their teachers in the year. Obviously, we have the open houses, which we adjusted to make sure there's no conflicts. You know, that was the direct feedback we got from you all last year to make sure there's no conflicts. But, you know, so we have a parent-teacher conference on November 17th and workshops for the high school. We actually think next year, we might push this back into December, kind of better align it to the trimesters, and then have less of a break in November, because I think we're becoming very sensitive just how hard that consistency with the November schedule. So those are really the only two things that are, you know, drastically different. And then, you know, on the right-hand side, you can see we better coordinated all the open houses, so there should be no conflicts for families. And then we'll see what questions you all have, and if you want to approve it, you can, or we could come back to it next meeting.
Looks good.
Any discussion down that end?
What, I should know this, but how many days of the snow days are built in in the contract?
Five.
Five. So if we're to use all those, that would actually push us through to the holiday? Is that kind of what I'm seeing here in June?
No, this year's better, next year is better than this year. So this year, literally, it would be five, then we'd have issues. Next year, we can go all, we can have seven snow days before running into Juneteenth. So it's actually a more favorable June calendar than when we have this year. You know, so the last day for kids is the 13th, and literally, there's, you know, a couple more days before it becomes an issue with the Juneteenth holiday.
Correct. Yep.
I got you, yep.
Because this year, it's on a Monday, and that's, that's become...
Right. It's on Thursday next year.
So that gives us almost five days of leeway, four days of leeway?
Yeah.
Okay.
Everybody comfortable?
Yes.
You comfortable, Dan?
We're very comfortable. I'll use the word "highly vetted." Highly vetted.
I will look, take a motion to approve the proposed 2324 Londonary School District calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five, zero. Thank you. All right, on to 8.4. The second reading.
So for tutoring for pay, you know, you did your first reading last time. You asked us to go do some research, see where other school districts are at. We were able to dig up a couple of them. But as you can see, Salem and Wyndham, they do allow it. They have their own conditions. We feel like our conditions are fine. We can certainly adopt some of theirs if we want to, but I think we generally feel that the conditions we put in place cover ourselves. But you do have some districts, like Goffston and Bedford, that do not have them, along with, and then Merrimack and Derry doesn't even have the policy. You know, so local districts are in different places. If we make this change, we're more closely aligned to Salem and Wyndham rather than Goffston and Bedford. So I, we didn't change anything. We wanted to see what the school board wanted to do, kind of knowing that larger viewpoint, and we're happy to talk about it some more.
I'll open it up. Sarah, you want to...
The only thing I, I think we might want to add is making sure, you know, the tutoring is outside of the school day, school hours? I don't see that in there. I don't know if we want to add that.
We have a line responsible, let me put that... During contracted hours, so that...
That means they're students during contracted hours, though, right? It doesn't say you can't, I mean, I just want to make sure that we're not allowing tutoring to happen during the school day.
Yep.
Because to me, that reads during contracted hours, that means you shouldn't, you should avoid tutoring a student that you have during your school day.
Mm-hmm. We could be more specific, but that's what we were getting at when we put that line.
Oh, okay.
We could be more specific, though.
All right, that was confusing then.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, because I don't, I don't think we want anyone...
During the day.
Yeah. I want, I don't know if we can make that clearer or change the language, just so that's clear.
Yep, again.
I noticed a couple of the districts have that in there. I think it makes sense to have it in there.
Sure.
Do that.
But...
Good, Sarah.
I think as long as they're not, like you said, we have no soliciting and stuff like that, I think then, I think, I think the language is good, other than that.
Sure.
Dan, I had a couple points of clarification on...
Sure.
On the Salem policy, under point two, it reads that personnel employed by the school district may not tutor a student in their own class.
Yep.
And on the Wyndham policy, it reads that the only way that they're allowed to tutor their own students is if it's appropriate by their IEP or 504.
Yep.
So our policy, the way it's drafted here, sounds a bit more open-ended than each of those.
Yeah, I mean, I think the way we tried to wrap our heads around it is, you know, we say it's best practice to avoid it. I think we believe that. I think where the rubber hit the road is, how many physics teachers do I have in this high school that can tutor? How many calculus teachers do I have? It's those specialized classes where we worry about, and how do we get around that? So we were trying to allow for that type of specialization and be a little bit broad. But I see your point, so we can adjust, but we, we, we would agree that it shouldn't happen as much, but we know it could potentially happen based on the class that the kids are taking, their needs. I mean, reading specialist is another thing that I think about, too, in the elementary grades.
Yeah. And even having kids currently in the elementary school, I can, I can understand the familiarity you would have with your current teacher being, wanting to have that teacher further help after hours if possible. And I also am fully on board with the line being stricken of restricting any teachers from within the building from being able to do it.
Yep.
But obviously, the point that would cause the most likely conflict of interest would be the current teacher. So just to be as careful as possible.
Yep, we'd agree.
You good, Ken?
Yeah, I think I'm good.
Okay. Amanda? Good. So with those couple of adjustments on that end, we could still bring it forward for the third reading?
Yeah, so I'll include the during the school day ideas and, you know, and work with Kim and maybe some lawyers on some, some other ideas to kind of incorporate, you know, what some of the other districts did, and we'll come back for a third reading.
Okay. All right, if I could have a motion to move policy GCQAB, Tutoring for Pay, to the third reading?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five, zero. Thank you. All right, 8.5, Dan.
So this would just be the effects on the actual policy, adopting what Crystal and Jen and the kids brought earlier. Obviously, as you can see, there's a few things stricken from the, from the actual policy. There's a lot more changes in the actual regulations, so we just tried to highlight them with, the red are the changes, and then the striking out is what would go away. So this would be the effects of what they presented.
So look for a motion to move policy JFCA Student Dress Code to a second reading?
Can I just call for a discussion on that?
Sure. Just open a motion, and then we'll, second for discussion?
Yeah. Go ahead. Got to make a motion to have our discussion?
Yep. Motion first, and a second for discussion.
Second?
For discussion?
I just, I still, I don't know if we can, I don't know if the committee is able to go back with all administration at the middle school and the high school and the SRO, just to check on that safety aspect or piece to it. We can, yeah, the hoods, yeah, sorry, I'm sorry, specifically the hoods. I still have concerns about that. I would just feel a little bit better if I knew that everyone was okay with that, especially SROs and especially identifying people in the building. I don't know how the board feels about that, but I don't know if we can just look a little bit more into that. Get more detail.
Sure.[1713.75]
I agree. I think it'd be great to move it forward for a second reading and have that follow-up coming in for that second reading.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Good. On that second, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Five zero to the second reading. And eight point six, Dan.
Yeah, so I just make sure I'm double checking everything.
Chief.
Oh, yeah, so this is just the regulations that go with it, sorry.
With that.
Yeah.
I'll look for a motion to move policy JFCA dash R to Student Dress Code to the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? No? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. Thank you. And into nine point one, superintendent report.
Yeah, so I'm just opening the discussion with the school board. We don't, we don't need to make any discussion or decisions tonight, but, you know, we have a new school board. There's a lot of work that got done over the last year that you all should be proud of. I'm just trying to set the table for what are the priorities this spring and summer because I think Tony's right. Sadly, we'll be back at the budget season pretty quickly.
Yeah.
You know, so I put a few things on this list. Master planning is going to continue. I want to thank the Lunardary for their support around the bond. You know, we actually had a meeting today to start the RFP process. We're going to get that moving. We want to make as much progress as we can on our most outdated things and get them fixed and get some breathing room. So master planning is on the table. The community is also very generous and the safety upgrades have invested in us, so I think we want to give an update when we're ready about how that's going. We've had a lot more delays with supplies over this year than we would have wanted. You know, we've talked about the special education study. We've had more of a pattern now talking about how our students are doing. We can continue to do that. We started doing some short curriculum updates. I think we're happy to kind of bring those to the school board and give you guys some more things to think about and kind of see what's coming down the road. I think we all enjoy the student presentations. I think we're happy to kind of incorporate that in the spring and then bring some of the kids back. By the fall of 2024, so not next fall, but the following fall, you know, we need a new strategic plan. Our five-year plan will be up for. So I think how we want to incorporate, you know, public comment and public input into that process is a good thing. The high school did pass their NEASC accreditation, so at some point, we're going to have that nice little letter and we're going to celebrate that they did well. We'll do that in public. And we are gearing up for summer math academy already, and we're actually in a great place kind of setting it up for our third iteration of it. And I think, you know, I'm just trying to see if there's other things the board wants to incorporate and I'll work with Bob to kind of space these out so we don't have eight-hour-long meetings, but we were able to kind of tackle all these things in a sensible way. So I'm just trying to get a sense of what are the other priorities the school board has?
Yeah, and I, I'll just jump on that a little bit. I like the idea, what we talked about last fall, about updates on where our children are in the classroom, K through 12. You know, more, I think we're all worried more about our Lunardary students than we are where we stand in the state. So if we can see that progress, I think, you know, it shows our due diligence inside the buildings and the classrooms. So I'm glad you hit on that. And I want to encourage all my colleagues here that, you know, we all are equal powers and if you have something you want to put on the agenda, please just reach out and that, and we'll get it on there. We'll get a discussion going and that. There's a lot of good ideas out there. Nobody should be limited to put something on the agenda. And I think we can do a lot more for the students of Lunardary and that. So don't, don't be afraid to reach out and say, hey, I'd like to put this on. And depending on what, you know, the superintendent's gotten at, it may have to wait two weeks, but, you know, we want to accommodate every board member if it's for the benefit of our student and community because that's important, I think, to all of us to be heard and the community wants to hear from us. They elected us to represent them as taxpayers, as community members and parents for the students in here. So please, anything that you think needs discussion, reach out. I invite you as all in that. So on that, I like that, Dan, we'll just keep moving forward and hopefully each one of us will add one or two items to the agenda between, you know, now and the end of the school year or beginning of next school year, just to keep moving forward.
And anyone can reach out to me during the week, you know, if there's other topics that come up and we'll get them on agendas.
Yep.
There is one actually off the top of my head that I can, that I'd like to add on right now, and it's not something that has to be done. It's probably more of a summer discussion because it's not a, you know, hot button issue. But with the maintenance bond being passed, which is fantastic, and all that work getting done over the next, you know, several years, couple of years, you know, what that is going to ultimately lead to, just by the nature of it, is 25, 20, 25 years from now, kind of the exact same thing coming up, which I don't think anyone wants to see, right? Like, we don't want to have to go back to the community again, to the taxpayers again and say, hey, guess what? Everything's breaking down at the same time again and we need more money. So what I'd like to discuss is kind of a plan to mitigate that. Like, how can we address this on a rolling, long-term solutioning type situation to come up with something so that when it does start coming due and things start coming around to be replaced, we pre-planned for it and we aren't getting whacked with $5 million or $25 million, whatever it is in 25 years, who the heck knows, right? But have some sort of a plan in place to help to mitigate that potential situation arising again, as I know we all wish we'd had from 25 years ago now, right?
That's a great point.
Yep.
Okay. All right, everybody good with that? Dan, you're next as well?
Yep, the next one, just a quick verbal update. So the Lunardary High School search committee has begun. We have a big group, but it's a very inclusive group and I have a lot of voices from the staff. We have students on the committee. We have parents in the committee. We just recently met and we decided that we have a couple of people we want to meet in person. We're inviting them to a first round interview. And some point after that, if we're successful, if we have people we're excited about, we are going to bring, hopefully, finalists to this building. And I think there'll be a part of that where after school hours, we hope to get community members here, parents here, whoever wants to meet these potential finalists because, you know, one thing we want to do is gather lots of feedback. We're going to get lots of feedback from staff, from students and community members. So just keep an eye out for announcements from Amity or myself about when these days are coming, if we actually get there, you know, if we have people we're excited about, if we think we have a good candidate or a good couple of candidates. So just keep an eye out for that. I am hopeful it's in the early part of April that we're ready for that. It might be a little bit later, it might be a little bit sooner, but once we're ready, the committee and I will kind of work together information out and we hope Lunardary participates with us because it's a big position, the high school principal. It's a very public position, so we want to make sure that the public feels part of that and can engage with us.
Just before we close out the regular meeting and go into non-public, Mr. DeFrancisco hit on it earlier in public comment. I just wanted to thank our staff and Superintendent Lisa and your staff on the bonds information that you put out, the budget of being under 2%. We sat here a couple of years ago and said it was unsustainable, that we couldn't keep going at that high rate of 3% to 5%, and you guys were able to put things together and get it under 2%. And then the communication part, I'll hit on that again. I heard that from at least 10 or 12 people, that the communication has really made them be able to see the whole picture and more information where a lot of times we would get beat up because there wasn't enough information and that. So now it's out there just explaining why it's needed, what if it isn't passed and that. So I want to thank you all for the hard work getting us to that point. And most important is our classrooms are thriving. There's excitement in our buildings. You know, education is on the rise in Lunardary. You can just tell it, you can feel it. You go in these buildings and it's a different atmosphere since a year ago. So keep up that good work. And I want to thank also the taxpayers out there for supporting your schools. We will do our best with staff and the board and all our employees to make sure your money is spent fiscally responsible and get the best education for these students. That's our top priority as your school board. And any questions or concerns, please reach out to us. We will get back to you in that. And let's keep the open line of communication. And thank you to all the folks that worked the day of elections and thank you to all the folks that were able to get to the polls. It wasn't ideal, but it was important to get the vote in if you were able to. Let's hope next year is a better day weather-wise, but all in all, I truly believe the community is starting to believe in our school system and seeing the rewards, you know, at the education portion of it. So thank you to all out there and thank you to my colleagues in that for the support of putting me as chair this year. It means a lot. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to thank all of you for welcoming me with open arms and especially Amanda for your kind words tonight. I look forward to working with all of you.
Happy.
Welcome. All right, I will, we will start left to right. I will ask for a motion to go into non-public session, request sent under RSA 91A3, section 2B, C, and I. Roll call vote.
Aye, Tim Porter.
Aye, Kevin Gray.
Aye, Bob Slater.
Aye, Sarah Loveland.
Aye, Amanda Butcher.
Thank you, everybody.